You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the October 8, 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance. I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is from Ralph Waldo Emerson. "Do not follow where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and you can leave a trail." So tonight, we will have a moment of silence in honor of the Hurricane Helene victims in Western North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve the agendas written? So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. So our next order on our agenda is our student performance. Please welcome Randy Valverde Justo from Reynolds High School. He is going to give us a piano performance.
Good evening, everyone. Randy Valverde Justo is a freshman at RJ Reynolds High School with a passion for music. Randy is a member of the Fellas Acapella Group and an advanced piano student. He recently passed auditions and has been accepted into the North Carolina Honors Chorus, which will perform in Winston-Salem in November of this year. His piano instructor, Dr. Amy Harley, states that Randy has already proven himself to be a strong leader in piano class through collaborating with other students, playing to lead class exercises, and using his independent practice time wisely. In addition to his other skills, Randy is currently working on a full orchestra composition for the PTSA Reflections Contest. We anticipate that you will continue to hear his name for recognition and awards over the next four years. Tonight, performing "Invention Number 13 in A Minor" by Johann Sebastian Bach, please welcome Randy Valverde Justo.
I'd also like to ask his family to stand. Thank you. That was absolutely incredible. Thank you. For our special recognitions, Tricia McManus, our Superintendent, will recognize our Board of Education, who was awarded the Silver Bell Award from the North Carolina School Board Association.
Yes, so congratulations. I'm not sure if you all are aware that you won this award, but it's a Silver Bell Award for each board member had to complete at least 12 hours of professional development last year. And so that happened on this board. So congratulations to you guys for the Silver Bell Award. Good job. Good job.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, please sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, respectful. Direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone else in the audience. Know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard and there is a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak. If you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. So our first speaker is Stephanie Kennedy.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kennedy, and I'm here to request that you support the dedication of the greenhouse on the campus of Reynolds in celebration of Glenn Perryman. First, I would like to thank the district for renovating the current structure for our teachers to incorporate into their curriculum. We are ordering a few more items and look forward to the completion of two Eagle Scout projects to complete the overall renovation. Once completed, the greenhouse will welcome biology and CTE classes as well as interested clubs. Now about Mr. Perryman. Glenn Perryman was an agriculture teacher at Reynolds for many years. He, along with a group of his students, ordered, paid, and built the current frame on the Reynolds campus. In 1991, Mr. Perryman can tell stories of every student that placed his grew into the greenhouse. During Mr. Perryman's tenure at RJR, he and his students opened the greenhouse every weekend to sell plants they grew. Money raised would help fund classroom projects and maintain the greenhouse. Many in the neighborhood and teachers would buy their vegetable plants from the greenhouse to support Mr. Perryman and his students' efforts. Mr. Perryman is proud of his students and how the greenhouse offered a unique educational experience for all involved. I've heard from some of his former students, like Hayes Walford from RJR Class of 2001, who said Mr. Perryman is a great friend and mentor. Frank Nifong, who is currently restoring electricity in Western North Carolina and would be here otherwise, said Mr. Perryman treated his students like they were his children and had an awesome time building the greenhouse. For about a year, I have been in contact with Mr. Perryman to let him know about the progress of the greenhouse. With each conversation and text, I realize Mr. Perryman is a teacher that we would all want or wish our children could have. His support of students goes beyond the classroom and his impact on his students reaches beyond what is in a book. He created hands-on opportunities that his students can still use and do use today in their workplace. I ask you vote in favor of dedicating the Reynolds Greenhouse in name of Glenn Perryman on behalf of all the teachers that go above and beyond to teach our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Sonnenlee.
Hello, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. I'm Katie Sonnenlee. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Action for Equity, which got its start in the Action for Ashley movement. We were all really excited to see that Ashley, the funding for Ashley, is on the school board agenda for tonight. As you all know, it's been a long community fight to get this going and find the funding. Over the years, we've made progress in buying land and getting the plans designed and all of that. But we're very excited that this project could move forward and open a school in the next few years. You all know equity is a goal of our district, and that means making sure that every child gets what they need in our schools. And we want to give every community a safe school that they'll be proud to enter. We know Ashley Elementary is one of the oldest schools in the district, not just as far as being an old building, but it has a long community history. People are very proud and very excited when they talk about Ashley School and getting to have a brand-new building and for that community would be truly amazing. It's one of the oldest buildings that we have, and it hasn't been kept up in some of the same ways that some of our other historical schools have been. So we need to build a new school. The Ashley Dream Report was created. I think it's in the board materials for tonight. And Action for Ashley helped to meet with community members, meet with families, students, staff, community members, parents, all those folks, grandparents that are involved with Ashley. Some of them went to school at Ashley. They have a kid at school and Ashley now are a grandkid at school at Ashley. So it was really amazing to meet and talk with all of them. And they're all so excited to have a safe, equitable school for their district. You know, Action for Ashley was born out of a concern about environmental concerns at this school, including mold. It's in a low-lying, flood-prone area. I'm so glad Brunson is being rebuilt because I know we have concerns about that school as well, and we want to see that Ashley is rebuilt as well. And as this process moves forward, we just want to encourage you to continue to keep community voice at the center. If you read the Ashley Dream Report, the community had incredible ideas that would make this a really fantastic learning environment. This is a city of arts and innovation. And what a great thing to incorporate in a brand-new school, one of the most recent schools we will be building, to have some really unique, interesting things in this really historic school and this really historic neighborhood. So I encourage you to vote to fund the building of the school. I know it's a little bit more than we planned at $46 million, but I'm so glad to hear that. That still leaves the district money left over for other projects as they come about. Okay, that's that. And then I just also wanted to say thank you for starting with a moment for Western North Carolina. I think all of our hearts are heavy. We all knew people or know people that live there. You know, we have, all have memories or know people there. So thank you for that. And I think we're also all keeping Florida in our hearts, and I know you have connections there. So thank you all for making space for that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Alvin Carlisle.
He's not here.
Oh, he's not here? Okay. Okay. Thank you. That concludes our public comments. Next, we have four items up for discussion tonight. First, our Superintendent, Tricia McManus, will give us a Future Ready update.
Thank you. I'm going to be joined by Alex Hoskins. We'll be tag teaming this, and you all have the material. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time on each slide because it's quite a bit of information. So I'll be doing part of it, then Alex will come up and do part of it as well. And so basically, Future Ready, what is this update? It is, we are calling our three main initiatives that really haven't changed in the last few years. We are putting those together to call it Future Ready. It's really a Future Ready Plan, and it includes our three main initiatives that we've been working on, which are our promotion and prevention strategies, which are in our code, deeper learning, which you've heard a lot about the last two years, and also inclusionary practices, which you've heard about over the last few years as well. So each of these plans is in different phases, so we're going to just give a quick update tonight because we're going to be coming back quarterly to actually share data with you. So I'm not going to read the vision and mission to you, but if you think about these three strategies or these three initiatives, they are very much grounded in our current district vision and mission statement. They also, together, are the way we believe we will achieve these five goals. And so there are parts, there are reasons for all of these. I'm going to share a little bit about the why behind these three initiatives, which make up our Future Ready Plan. And so number one, they're aligned to academics, behavior, and culture. You'll see this graphic all over the place now because really what we're talking about aligns to those three areas of the work. That's the work: academics, behavior, and culture, and it's also part of our MTSS process as well. So why are we doing, why over time have these three areas been the key focus? And our data basically shows that. Although you see some improvements, proficiency is not where it needs to be in reading, math. Really, proficiency needs to improve in all areas. And so that is one of the reasons. That's part of the background. Reading, our EOGs for reading in grades three through eight, you can see that we continue to have gaps in achievement. And so that's another part of the why. When you get to behavior, we've shown you the discipline incidence, but also the student enrollment for our different racial groups of students. So you can see that. The next slide is the same slide, but it adds students with disabilities and multilingual learners. So you can see where are, what was the percent of discipline incidence coming from a group of students? And what is their enrollment? So again, all of this data is just building the background of why these three key areas are so important. This is other data that you've seen around educating students with disabilities. And when we're trying to achieve state targets, their targets, we are below those targets when it comes to students that are separated the majority of the day or in separate settings. And then last but not least, all of this is rooted in evidence. And so none of what we're doing is not based on research. And so a lot of what we're doing is also supported by Hattie's High Yield Strategies, which is a body of research we work. We use a lot to make decisions about instruction or about behavior. We're following the research around what works and what has proven to work. So with that said, it's three main initiatives, and you've heard, again, you've heard these three over and over for the last few years. And we've also talked a lot about, it's not the initiative, it's not the actual initiative, but how we implement it. How do we execute? And that's why we're here tonight, because we've spent from last spring throughout the summer creating extensive planning that we are now monitoring the metrics. And Alex, in a few minutes, is going to come up and talk about those metrics. But at the end of the day, I think it was, I think it's 75%. I just sent this out to principals today, and I shared it during Summer Leadership Institute. But it's about 75% of initiatives fail due to execution. And I think that, you know, last year, that's been a big conversation on the board all the time about, this is what we say we're doing, how is it being done? And so this plan is really about, it's about support and making sure we're providing support, but at the same time, accountability and holding ourselves accountable to doing what we say we're going to do. That's what these plans are all about. So you can see there are the promotion and prevention strategies, which is our code, designed to build relationships to reduce referrals. Inclusionary practices basically maximizes interactions among students of all abilities. And last but not least, deeper learning, and that's providing authentic learning experiences and opportunities to develop durable skills. I will tell you, as I go into schools lately, and I know, this is a qualitative data point, but as I've been in schools in the past since the beginning of the school year, I am seeing, I am seeing evidence of much more evidence of deeper learning this school year. Is it where we, you know, is it in every classroom where we want to be? Is it at scale? No. But I have seen, I was just last week, and I'll just call out Mount Tabor, and I saw, like, computers were away, kids were learning. In a Reynolds visit recently, same thing. Like, every school I've been to, that whole idea of let's get out of the Chromebook, let's have that engaging interaction with questions and answers and group work and students collaborating, and I am seeing more of that this year. So I'm very excited. Again, that is very anecdotal in nature, but we are actually, you're going to see in a little bit, a walkthrough tool that we're using to start to capture what is deeper learning looking like in our classroom. So our teachers are working very hard, and you'll see also that we rolled out a vision for learning and teaching at the beginning of this school year that actually defines what does deeper learning actually look like when it's happening in the classroom. So with that said, here is where we are with these different initiatives that make up our Future Ready Plan. In 2223, you can see with our code, that was the first year of our promotion and prevention. That was the first year of implementation. 2324, which was last year, was the second year. And 2425, which is our current year, is our third year of that implementation. Inclusionary practices, 2223 is really setting the context. We started working with external consultants during that year. And then 2324, which was last school year, we had three schools that we were working with as our first implementation. This year is our 2425 school year, and we are working with 16 schools this school year. And when we get into the planning, the plan and what this is, you're going to see in a minute, what are the myths about these items and what are the realities? And I think that will clear up some confusion. And then deeper learning and the portrait of a graduate. Last year, we did a lot of context setting. This school year, we have now rolled out our vision for learning and teaching. So this is really, last year was kind of the first year, but it was of setting the context. This year is really the first year of full implementation, but the second year that you've been hearing about deeper learning and the portrait of a graduate. So very quickly, I'm going to go through, for each of the initiatives, I'm going to go through myths, realities, and I'm going to show you, share a SWOT analysis that really talks about what are the, some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of each of these. Because we know that we have all four of those areas for all, each of these initiatives. But here's for promotion and prevention. So these are some of the myths, that there are no consequences for bad behavior. And so basically, that is not, there are consequences in the code. The code does not work. The code is what's in the piece of paper in a document. It's really the implementation of what it is saying that is so key. We've talked a lot about that, and I know last year we were doing a lot of calibration around the behavior matrix. This year, we are really starting to monitor more carefully the interventions and the prevention. And you're going to hear a little bit about that when Alex comes up around some of the tools we're using to monitor progress, that we're using and will be using throughout this year to monitor progress on that. One size fits all. It's not, because there are multiple levels, including tier one and court support, that impacts engagement. And then you can see right now, as we think about all of our students across the district, about 85% do not have any referrals at all. Some have maybe one for something, and then there are some that are, you know, have gotten more than one or have many. And that's where we really need to capture the interventions and if they're working or not. So what are the, some of the, with this initiative, what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats? I'm not going to read it to you, but you can see some of those. I mean, honestly, a common language is always something that's important in a school district, a large district. Common language, and that's a strength. You can see that we're able to track data with this, with the promotion and prevention strategies. Some of the weaknesses is time. A lot of training has been rolled out. And a lot of that is folks get trained, go back to their schools, and train at school. If you, if you look at our educators in schools, time is so limited. I mean, they don't have enough time to plan. There's, you know, so when you think about professional development, a lot of folks do that through their PLT time during the day. You know, after-school is very difficult, you know, with everything else that's going on in schools. And so that is definitely a weakness. And then focus on compliance. Any of these plans, if you're just checking a box or trying to meet something, like some type of, we did that, that's not going to work. This is truly about ownership, about why we're doing this, and actually implementing it, owning the implementation of this. If you look at some of the opportunities and threats, I will say that the opportunity, the walkthrough tool for consistent implementation has been needed. We finally have that. So as we walk through classrooms, walk through schools, there is now a new sheet that shows is a school ready, meaning are all the prevention measures in place? And then when it gets to the interventions, are they using the intervention? So when a student has multiple referrals, what's happening there? And tomorrow, Principal's meeting, we're actually going to be spending time on that because we have a new way to capture that data. And one of the biggest opportunities here is gaining, making sure we're listening to our employees and our teachers. And so at the end of each quarter, we will be doing listening sessions in every single school. That will be starting in the next couple of weeks, and will go till November 15th. So within one month, within four weeks, we will have gotten to every school to listen to a team of at least 20 teachers, administrator staff, to find out what are still some concerns? What can we continue to do to support? Because behavior is hard work, but behavior is part of the work that we do. I love it. Just before I walked up here, I got a pen that I absolutely love, and it says, "Behavior is a form of communication," and it is. Every behavior is a form of communication. And then you can see the threats, and I think the threats is, we've got to battle those threats by getting out the correct information. Like, what is, what are, high expectations are critical, and that's both for academics and behavior. And then just continue to focus on mindsets because we had this conversation earlier in committees about kids and how to make sure they stay engaged. Because our future, our community's future, the depends on the success of our students, and that means all of them. So that's going to, we're going to continue working on that. Here's inclusionary practices. The myth there is just throwing, throwing, which is, sounds terrible, but all students with disabilities just into general ed classrooms and eliminate separate settings. That is a myth of this work. Fails to meet the needs of all students, that's a myth. When you put, there is so much research around what happens when you have kids engaged in learning together. And that's kids with disabilities and kids without disabilities, and what happens to the outcomes for both learners. It is research-based, and so that's a myth. Requires more staff and time. Not always. There are times, based on IEPs, that more staff is going to happen. But in many times, it's about looking at the staff we have and analyzing what they're doing and making moves with scheduling or with people to meet the needs. And that it's driven by lawsuit. That is not accurate. And so then you can see the reality part of this, and I think I kind of covered the reality as we were moving forward. And so I want to say one more thing, though. The reality on the throwing all the kids together, just like haphazardly, everybody out there, that is not what's happening at all. And it really is looking at every student and what they need and making sure that that comes out through a high-quality IEP, through the IEP team making a really good decision, which includes the parents, and that's a big part of this. So here are our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You can see those again. I think, again, we really want to focus on where are our areas of opportunity and where are the threats? I think one thing we've uncovered is that there are challenges, you know, with behavior. Behavior is not something that everybody just walks out of college knowing how to work with. And so we have a lot of supports in place. We are so lucky to have Shannon Dobson, who is, I consider, like a major behavior expert. But she's really working to develop, develop anybody that supports behavior. She is working to develop those. I was leaving a meeting last week and saw all the behavior, like the behavior folks, people that work with behavior coming to one of her trainings so that they know. And so you can see the other ones as well. There are many concerns to address at what time, I will tell you, as we support our students with disabilities. That can seem overwhelming at times, the different areas we need to focus on. Inclusionary practices is one item, but there's so much when it comes to, you know, effective IEPs, making sure that our teachers have the time to write, to write effective IEPs, to be part of IEP meetings. Same with our administrators. There's a lot that we are having to work out. So last one, myth and reality around deeper learning. It's the latest program. It's not a program. That's good news. It's not a program. That's good news. It creates classroom management issues. Not true. It actually does the opposite when kids are engaged in learning, and we all know that. Kids can't learn that way. Not true. And I will tell you, and the old way worked. So what I will tell you is when it said kids can't learn that way, there's this, I don't, this is a myth that if you are a struggling learner, that you need to sit more with rote. Or, you know, I remember when Megan was little, like, copying stuff all the time, and I'm thinking, that's, that's not exactly learning. Like, how do we move that to a higher level of learning? And so when you're more engaged with hands-on, relevant, relevant learning, that's what, you're going to have less issues with behavior, and you're going to have kids learning at a higher level. I will say, when I was at Tabor last week, I loved what they did with their biology department. They actually, the three teachers together came up with a way. They gave the first assessment based on that group of standards that they were teaching. And then they grouped the kids into three different rooms, and these groups are fluid. You're not just stuck in one room forever. And so what they did was, if you had mastered that content that you just studied, you were getting a different, different support. If you needed more time, you were then given hands-on. Like, some of the students that needed more time or more reinforcement, they were doing hands-on in that class. And then some had already done that, but now we're just retaking the assessment. And if they mastered it, now they're moved to the other class. And it's just this fluid rotation that gets at mastery, but actually does it in a way that is leading to deeper learning. So I was very excited, excited by that. And so deeper learning, it's rigorous instruction. It is, it allows students to demonstrate agency, and it allows them to demonstrate the durable skills in our portrait of a graduate, and you can see the rest of that. So with that, here are the strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for deeper learning. I will say, when it gets over to opportunities, this is, we also have a walkthrough tool that we're using to be able to, as a district team, make sure we're on the same page when we walk into classrooms. If we are not consistent as we walk in classrooms, and yes, that's an example of deeper learning, if we're not on the same page, why would we expect our schools to be on the same page and consistent? So a lot of our time now is, this team, I think we have over 800 walkthroughs documented where the team is calibrating and getting on the same page. And so that now principals can use those tools as we move forward too. And all of this is part of our, our principal's training. Our, our summer training this past summer, teachers, they all like really focused in on the vision for learning and teaching. And our next PD day, that is also, we'll come back to that. So what does deeper learning look like in the classroom? What's the how of deeper learning? And I will say on the, on the threats, these are true threats. I mean, the, the accountability model, I mean, we don't, we really don't have control over that, but we do have control over having students do well on those assessments by experiencing deeper learning every day. The more you're thinking every day, the better you can think on the test. And then if you look at mindsets, beliefs about student learning, and then the funding. You know, to do this learning, you know, there's a lot of hands-on engagement, and our, our teachers need, we need to make sure we're giving our teachers the resources that they need. So I'm going to bring Alex up, she's going to share some of the metrics, show you where the plan is located, like pull that up and show you a dashboard that we're going to be using, and then we'll open up for questions.
So good evening, board. As you know, when we establish a plan, we have to figure out whether or not the plan is working. And when we do that, we, we have to identify what our success metrics are. So, so the first set of metrics deal with the implementation of the future-ready initiatives, and whether or not we're doing those with fidelity. And so you can see that we are going to be looking at, as Superintendent McManus mentioned, the classroom walkthrough responses, this classroom walkthrough tool. I don't believe you've had the opportunity to see yet. We are, we have, have collected a couple hundred responses so far this year. We're waiting to have a little bit more data, so that we have some robust analysis to be able to share that with you in a way that, that is meaningful. It's still a little early, where we know we're getting close to the end of the quarter, so we'll, we'll have that, that information for you, and that'll be available at an upcoming, at an upcoming meeting. One of our other areas of metrics is, what is the, the impact of these, these three initiatives on the experience of students and staff? So if we want to engage our students, and we want our staff to, to feel better about their, their ability to impact student outcomes, we need to be able to measure that. And so, so we know we use the panorama survey as one mechanism for doing that. And, and so we're, we're going to be looking at several areas of that particular survey data to, to determine how we are impacting our, our student and staff experiences within the three future-ready initiatives. The third area deals with the promotion and prevention strategies. And we know for this one, if, if we want the outcome of using promotion and prevention strategies with greater fidelity, and having those interventions, and tracking those interventions, then, then we should end up seeing a reduction in discipline referrals. And so you can see the metrics that, that we have identified that will allow us to determine the impact of, of, of this particular plan and these three initiatives jointly, because they don't work in isolation, they, they really do work in conjunction with one another around how, how do those three things ultimately impact student discipline outcomes as well? And then we want to look at, as Superintendent McManus shared, those metrics that the state tracks around student environment for students with disabilities. We also want to be impacting our students who spend the majority of their time in separate settings, and, and move students who are able and, and have the supports that they need to be in a less restrictive environment into those environments. So, so those are the metrics that, that we will be tracking around this particular plan. So this is what the plan looks like. It does start out with our district goals, as you might expect it to. Let me see if I can make that a little bigger. That's got to be a little bit better. Our district goals, because everything we do is, is grounded in the work of the district strategic plan. We go from there into the future-ready goals. We have identified three. This year, because we are in that year of implementing the vision for learning and teaching, we want to make sure that our folks have a common understanding of the three initiatives, so that we can actually address some of those myths and misconceptions that the superintendent was, was mentioning, because there is a lot of misinformation out there around all three of the initiatives. And we want to make sure that we have a clear understanding among staff and all stakeholders, really, around what those three initiatives are. And then we want to make sure that we are implementing the initiatives with fidelity, and, and then we want to make sure that as we are doing that, that we are evaluating our implementation to figure out where it is that we need to pivot, or provide additional support, or additional resources along the way. This page does go on to go into those metrics, but I already shared those, so I'm not going to go over those again. The next tab is for objective one, which is the professional development and resources to establish those common understandings around the three initiatives. And this particular objective really digs into the support that teachers will need in order to implement deeper learning with greater fidelity, in order to enhance their inclusionary practices for students with disabilities, and in order to offer the interventions that students need in order to, to have some greater success and engagement in, in the classroom and in the school culture and climate. So I'm not, I promise I am not going to read every cell of this plan to you. Tonight is an overview, so that you know that, that we have considered the, the arc of, of what needs to happen in order to, to implement these three objectives. It, tonight's really more of, of a, of an overview, so that you know kind of what's coming, and then I'm going to tell you the cadence of, of the, the review process as we move through the rest of the school year. The second objective is about school leaders monitoring the implementation of the initiatives. And this is where that classroom walkthrough tool comes into play, and making sure that we can identify not just the student, the, the teachers that need additional support through the classroom walkthrough, although that is definitely part of it, but also, who are the teachers out there that are model examples of the three initiatives? Who is doing a great job of providing deeper learning? So, so when, when Superintendent McManus goes to Mount Tabor and sees a model, like the biology example that she was able to share, how can we make sure that we can share that model broadly, and, and perhaps encourage other schools to, to look at doing similar kinds of models in their environments as well? And then the last one is really around the analysis and the evaluation of the implementation. So this is a little bit more of the, at the end of a time period, being able to look at the classroom walkthrough data, to be looking at the panorama data, to look at student outcome data, and, and to look at the intervention data. As Superintendent McManus mentioned, the principals tomorrow are being trained on the implementation platform for prevention and promotion strategies, so that we can track with greater fidelity, what is it that we are doing to help our students who have repeat behaviors? And, and how can we make sure that we know what we are doing to, to impact those students, so that they can have greater success in all areas of their educational experience? And so, so that's what, what objective three kind of goes into, is, is the tracking of that particular data. So in terms of the, the dashboard, I'll show you that very briefly. Right now, it has practice data, it does not have live data yet, because we don't have live data yet. We're, we're still too early in the school year. But what it does is ask those three questions that are part of the, the plan that we just shared. And if you click on the question, then the, each of those metrics that, that, that we talked about comes up, and it shows the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year data. And Andy and his team are, are working very closely with us, with the future-ready team, to, to track that data, as well as then to monitor it and upload it, so that at the beginning of each quarter, we, we have the updated and ongoing data for, for accuracy's sake. Then the question becomes, well then, what are you going to do with all that? So on the first Wednesday of each month, the future-ready team meets. And the future-ready team has representation from all three initiatives. It is an interdepartmental, cross-departmental team of approximately thirty folks. And, and we get together and we take a look at the data, and we dig into what's happened in the last month? What do we know? What do we need to know? Where are the gaps in what information we have available? So that we can make sure that we have the mechanisms necessary to find that information. And then that group of body decides, okay, what kind of is bubbling to the surface for this month? And, and so what needs to be shared with the executive cabinet that is relevant, that is timely, that is either a positive trend or an area of concern? And sometimes there are both, right? And, and sometimes it could be the same data source that provides both a, an asset as well as, as an area of concern. And then the, the intent is that after executive cabinet has a chance to look at that data and review, there will then be a recommendation of, of what information needs to be shared at a monthly update to this body, so that the Board of Education and our community are kept up to date on a monthly basis around these initiatives, so that, so that you are aware of how our progress is moving forward, and, and how we are pivoting in order to make sure that we get the best possible outcomes that we can for students by the end of the school year.
Any questions? Yes, Board Member Barr.
You know what, could we go back to the code of conduct slide, Ms. McManus? And first of all, I've been asking about SWOT analysis, that's one of my favorite things. Thank you for the SWOT analysis, it's clear. But when I look at this, I know that you, you constantly consistently go out and you talk to, talk to staff, parents, and administration. But do you have some type of formalized way where you get feedback from parents about the code of conduct?
No, the only group that we have, other than in any questions they answer about behavior, safety, culture on the panorama, like specifically. And then we've talked to, we bring it to parent guardian advisory, but like, we're about to do this, these quarterly, every school, in the school with teachers. We do, we have not scheduled something like that with parents. I mean, I think in the inception, parents were part of the creation of the code, but as far as like continuing with focus groups of parents, no, we probably, that would be a great, a great strategy to add.
Yeah, because I was going to say, you know, whenever we hear concerns, not only do we come, get it from teachers or administrators, but parents, and those are our clientele, okay. All right, thank you.
Good idea, we'll, we will record that.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Yes, okay, there's something that I'm having a little bit of a conflict with, and that is that one of the myths is no consequences for bad behavior. And one of the goals is to lower ISS and OSS by five percent. How are we going to, so, how do we achieve that without that, without making that myth true?
Yeah, I know, I, I know, I know exactly why you're thinking that. So if we are using the promotion and prevention strategies, and if they're really being implemented, and, and folks have the resources and, and know how to be on the front end of prevention, you're going to then lessen, you're, you're going to start to lessen. It's not like you're going to just not punish bad behavior, you're going to actually start to eliminate bad behavior.
Can we have that as the goal instead, then? I, I don't, I don't like the idea of the goal being to lower, and then that puts pressure on administrators to not call it out.
Because I was worried about that too. So the second item there is really, the, the first item's the, the reduction of ISS, OSS, and all of that, that would be because behavior's improving. And so staff wanted to leave those items in there, they were part of the original code work and the why behind it, but the second item there, we asked, we added. And that says, at least ninety percent of students receiving exclusionary consequences would actually received the interventions. So what we're trying to get at here in that item is more interventions. That the, the reduction of ISS, OSS, that's not because you're just reducing it, for the sake of reducing it. It's because as you do the prevention and the interventions, you will have less behaviors. And so that's, so you should start to see those, that reduction. But I know what you're saying, but that's not, so the goal of this is just stop consequencesing. But those are not the only consequences, by the way. The ISS and OSS are not the only consequences in the code. There are other consequences that are being used, but these are being used probably the most. So I, I know, I trust me, because I said the same thing. And, and that that's not, that's, people are going to think, oh, well, that's easy to do, just don't do it. No, that is not, that, it is not that easy. It is, and those things are being used all the time, is what our data is saying. So it's, it's not about not doing those things, but those aren't the only consequences. And consequences minus interventions don't change behavior. And prevention, without prevention, you're going to have behaviors, so.
Board Member K.
This one might be something that needs to be on the myth fact, I'm not sure. I guess based on how you answer, but are walkthroughs going to reinstitute the checking of lesson plans?
No, so that, that is not part of this work at all. That's not a focus. And the walkthroughs, when you think about the walkthroughs, walkthroughs are used to actually look at trends, so that you, as a central office or district team, can look in the mirror and go, what do we need to do to support our educators across the district? So if there's a trend with, you know, we're not asking higher-level questions, well then there must be something lag, like that we need to address within our professional development as a school system. And so, yeah, so no, the walkthroughs are not to walk through and check lesson plans, because to be honest with you, the best check of a lesson plan is what you see happening. And that's, I mean, I was just at school today, and you can very clearly see what that lesson plan was by seeing what the different groups of students were doing. I was at Moore earlier today, so it's, it's, so that's, I mean, no. To answer your question in a very long-winded way, that is not part of the walkthrough.
Okay, great. And then I love that we're going to have the, once a month, it looks like, kind of reconvening on things. And when you're doing those things, are you considering the conversations that are happening, I guess, with TAC and with student advisory, obviously, parent guardian? Because I know there's a lot of feelings about some of this. And I think where I get a little bit of heartburn, I always bring it up, is with the easy inclusionary practices, because I believe that all of our children do need access to the good stuff. But there is some maybe confusion or concern about the time that children are being given, their service time, that they have been drastically changed. Is that supposed to be happening?
I don't have, I mean, I don't have evidence of that. What I, what I know is that none of that time changes without an IP meeting, IEP team convening. So if the IEP team gets convening, and there are teachers, parents, administrators in that meeting, and in that meeting, it says, we can, you know, the, the goal is, let's, where can a child have access? It might not be all day, it might be during science, it might be during social studies, it might be during, it might be during the reading block. It, it just, it just depends on the needs of each child. I think that's why it's so important that, like, just all kids, okay, we're going to take this whole class of kids that are currently in a separate setting, we're just going to put them all in without sitting at a table and discussing each child individually, and what that child needs is, is not, that would never happen. And that's not happening now. But the goal is that part of the day, and, and honestly, the research around inclusion is so clear. I, I, I have read study after study after study around what it does for learning outcomes for both students with disabilities and their non-disabled peers, when they have more time, when they have more time together. But with that said, it's got to be intentional, and it's got to be designed with all those players at the table making those decisions. It's not just a, and, and they are doing that, they are doing that. They're spending the time, students that are leaving our pre-K, there are meetings. There are meetings where we're, they're discussing the assessment data, and, and where would be the best place, or the, not the best place, but where can this child's needs be met? Not even where, because now I'm going, see, it's the old language you use. I'm going into placement, and it's not the place. It's like, what does this child need? And honestly, if the residential school, which is where, and that's where the family wants the child to go, we can meet the needs of the child, what, that's where they should go. And that's, so that's, I mean, there's a lot to this process, but at the end of the day, it's about inclusion, and this is inclusion, right now, we're talking about students with disabilities, but it's inclusion for everyone, it's access. Look at the data I shared last week around A. Look at the data I shared last week around AP. It's around access. When you provide access, it's amazing things can happen for kids, so.
Board Member Watts?
So my discussion is around the classroom walkthrough tool. So, and I know we'll hear more information about it, but when you bring the information back to us, could you consider also sharing with us what it looks like?
Sure.
The number of buttons we have to push? Who gets to share the walkthrough? Is it going to be teacher-based, school administrator-based? Who's actually going to, all that kind of data will be great to see as we move forward. Because I have some memories of our walkthrough that may not be as positive. So I want to see how we've improved on that tool and access to who can use the tool.
Absolutely. We will bring that back. And I am with you. Walkthrough tools can be amazing, an amazing resource, as long as everybody knows what we're doing with it, why we're using it. This tool right now, and how it's being used, is non-evaluative. It is strictly to gather data. Because if we were, if we see in every classroom that kids that, as we're walking through, that kids are, you know, still just all day in the Chromebook, they're not, you know, engaged in authentic learning, then we have not. It's not like we're going to evaluate the person whose room we're in. Because right now, we're really just collecting data to say, what other training do we need? What support do we need to give our school leaders? That's the goal of the walkthrough tool. Now, all principals right now are not using that tool. They have other tools they're using. We are really trying to calibrate as a systems-level team before then we rolled out that tool. And as a team, if tweaks need to be made, let's make them and then roll the tool out to everyone. But teachers will always, I will always say this too. You don't do walkthroughs in a classroom unless teachers know about it. Because they need to know what the tool is. They need to know what your, what data you're, what are you collecting? And what's the purpose of it? And there's reason, like, if I was a principal and doing a walkthrough, your teacher should know, here's what I'm looking for, and here's how we're going to use that data.
Board Member Crowley?
Back to the behavioral metrics. I appreciate the focus on prevention and definitely on restorative practices. But in consideration of students that have multiple infractions that seem to escalate, are we considering parameters for moving students to either the R3 or Main Street for resources that they maybe can't access at school or have needs met that they can't? Like, are we looking at parameters for getting those kids connected with what they need? Because it's not getting remedied in the school.
So right now, we are using R3 as it was originally intended, which is if you are suspended out of school, that's a place you can go so that you are continuing your learning and you are getting supports there. And there are counselors and there are folks there giving supports. We have continued, and Deon can, you know, we can share this data with the board. We've continued to do referrals to Main Street this school year. And I think, I mean, I've seen, I've seen a spreadsheet that shows how many. And so students are going there to get additional layers of support. If you're asking, are we looking at it like as a, just a movement to these places without following? I'm not sure what you're asking, Board Member Crowley.
Well, just looking at the goals that we've set to, you know, to reduce. And again, I know we're on the same page, but I'm very concerned about these numbers. I'd like to see us set goals in a way that are for the positive and that showing, and then let, let these numbers come down because we are doing the work. Not, I just want to make sure we are driving this in the right direction. And it is not being driven with the goal is to bring the number down. So that's easy to do. I just erase things off my sheet and the number's down. But if the, if the goal is to increase things, then I do think we have a real issue at a lot of our schools, especially high schools, where we have students whose needs are not being met. I don't know that they, I don't know that each one of our high schools can meet every kid's need that's having behavioral issues. And I think for everybody's sake, for preserving the learning environment in the school for students who are there who do want to learn, and for getting the child who isn't ready to learn the help that they need, I think we need to look at that as a, as a goal. And a viable option to, I mean.
Getting, just like with inclusionary practice, I mean, getting students the help they need and attempting that first with their, in the setting they're in.
Can that be done at every school? Can that be done at every school? Does every, does every school have the resources to meet that need of every student? Like, what's different at R3 or at Main Street? What services or people are offered there that are going to help with the restorative part? More so than what, can we meet that at every school?
Yeah, well, I will say, when it comes to mental health and behavioral health, I don't think that we will ever have enough resources. And that is, I mean, and I think, again, I'm going to go back to funding. And, yeah, so we have amazing social workers and counselors on our campuses right now. We have many schools with behavior support personnel on their campuses right now. You have your administrative team with your APs and your principals. And you have many teacher leaders on, on your campuses. It really is about organizing for what that support looks like. Is it ever going to be enough based on the uptick or increase of behavioral and mental health concerns in the last several years, like post-pandemic? I think we could use more. That's why we used ESAR to add 30 more social workers. And that's why we, you all asked us to take that to the county in the budget to keep adding more folks that can support mental health and behavioral health. But I think, again, I think it's, it's about the work. I'm going to go back to implementation and execution. If there, if your, if your systems and structures aren't very clear in what you're doing, and I'm going to go back to, an intervention is not a one and done. An intervention is an ongoing level of support for a student. And that's going to be different based on what they need. When that is done with fidelity, or in a classroom or in a school with fidelity, then you can see, okay, we've tried this. You know, the, all of the prevention measures are in place, all right? So behavior, classroom management's great, all of your behavior, you have adult supervision everywhere, very active. You have all the preventative measures in place. And then students that are, that are not following, you know, are having a hard time, even with all that in place, there is another layer of intervention that they need. This is part of the MTSS process that is statewide. If you do those interventions with fidelity, like, so it's not a one and done. It's, I'm going to do this, and we're going to do it every day, and we're going to measure progress. And even when it doesn't work the first two days, we're going to keep going because it takes more time than that. Then you might need to go to something else that is even more extensive. So until we can show that all that is, is happening in the way that, that we know it needs to be happening, we're not just saying we're going to move a bunch of kids to somewhere else. But that doesn't mean that's not happening for those that need it. Because I see the data, and it is happening for some, so.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. So I get why the sort of, the tricky part of the reduction. Because like, when we first started getting the feedback about the Code of Conduct, and it was, we got the whole like, hands are tied thing. And then you, like, there were teachers who were saying, well, my administrator is telling me their hands are tied. And then there's also the, you know, like, there's ultimately this question of like, to Board Member Crowley's point of, if I want to, we would hope people's integrity would prevail and that you wouldn't like mess up the numbers or like not report, put things in educator's handbook. But I think that, to me, it's about, are you putting the proper? Like, there are so many other steps to take before you assign a child. I think historically, the assignment of ISS or OSS was the easiest thing to do. And like, would it be fair that, the expectation is just that we're not jumping to the easiest thing to do?
Yes. That, to me, is a fair, a fair expectation. And based on what the student has done, what is the thing that's going to like help them understand what they did? And how they need to kind of correct that? And we do it as, as parents. I mean, I don't think we just give the child the same consequence every time just because it's easy. Well, you might, it's easier. But that's not the right thing that's going to change the behavior. So, yeah, exactly.
And, I mean, I was in a school today, and there was this incident, something happened. And like, a child was like, I'm going to say young adult, because it was high school. But like, they were like really angry. Like, you could tell they were just very, very angry. And in my mind, I was like, I don't even know what you do. Like, because is, is the removal of the child from the classroom appropriate? Absolutely, because the learning environment was disrupted. But if you just send the child home, there's nothing, you can't, you don't get to the root cause. You don't like, and I think that that's, it's, the root of all of this is a mindset shift that takes a long time to do. And I think that that's probably what the, when we, when we think about like feedback from like our community and parents and like even the people in our buildings, I think the hardest part about this is I think people had expectations around how quickly mindsets would shift. And then how quickly our data would shift to match the mindsets. And it's, it's, it's going to take long, like, if you've been doing something for 40 years, you're not going to stop doing it in like two or three. And I feel like a part of this is just that we are patient and we understand that it takes some time to get a lot of this done.
Absolutely. It really does. And I think, I think managing expectations around it is probably something we could have done better from the start. And I think now knowing where are we in year three, what are we trying to achieve this school year? And this school year, we are really trying to achieve that students are getting interventions when they have multiple referrals, you know, for behaviors, for repeat behaviors. And like, they really are getting the interventions, so we continue to provide training. Behavior is very hard work. I think since the beginning of time, when, I mean, I've been 35 years. Behavior was challenging. It's been challenging. And I know that, that people have said in the last, like, post-pandemic, it's even more challenging. I hear that everywhere. I hear, you know, chronic absenteeism problem everywhere, like behaviors, mental health, and kids needing supports, and that's all gone up. But I feel like behavior is for a very, like, has always been something like, you know, you all were like, oh, my God, I gotta, I need to get better at classroom management. How do I, how do I handle students that are acting up? And there's so much, some teachers are so good at it, and the culture they build, and they don't miss a beat, and they're just naturals at it. I've, I've seen those teachers. And some, it just takes a lot more training and, and time. And I always tell people, get to October if you're a new teacher. And I promise you, you can, we'll, we'll get you the help. But the other thing is when, when folks are struggling with behavior, we got to be in classrooms with them, alongside them, the administrators, the teacher leaders. People that have more experience need to be in there alongside folks to help. Because again, it can get better with very specific strategies that you repeat over and over and over. But I'm not going to lie and say that it's not challenging. It is, it is.
Yes, Board Member Kuhn?
To that, the behavior changing is, is hard. And some teachers have it like gift, and they just do it. And some need of like, give me the ideas, help me with this. Oftentimes, I think, I hear that, you know, we don't have enough bodies to do something all at the same, like, in everywhere that needs something done, right? Is there a way to, I don't know, produce or give like a cheat sheet for interventions? Or a Cliff Notes version of something? So at first glance, they could say, hey, here's an intervention. Because they know the kid the best, we would hope, and could potentially.
So that is something, and Shannon, I'm going to look at you, because that has been produced. I believe there is a, there is exactly what you're describing, Board Member Kuhn, a resource for teachers that has interventions if you need to go beyond, you know, here's what you do for prevention, and if you need then interventions, here's behaviors, here's things you can try. Shannon is out in, in schools probably all the time. Meredith, I mean, I know you guys are in schools supporting teachers around those interventions. So yes, there, there are tools like that. Shannon, can I, where do they exist? Are they on the webs, like the?
Yeah, they're on our Canvas page. And then also, there are some spaces on the website.
Okay.
But in addition to like tomorrow, we'll be meeting with principals. We're really going to roll out what we call the standard treatment protocol. So it's going to go in depth to about six specific interventions that have really specific skillset. And that will be ongoing.
Yeah, sorry, Shannon, I should have told you, yep.
This makes it so real. This is waking me up. I was kind of getting a little tired. So, yes, it's past my bedtime. But, yes, to that point, like, on our Canvas page, there are lots of resources. And I, I mean, I also want to say, like, resources are one thing, you know, still getting side by side and getting in there, that's what we, we try to do. We also don't have enough bodies, but we try our best in that space. So on our Canvas page, we offer Power Hour sessions and some trainings within KICUP. But tomorrow, with our leaders, we're specifically going to really dive in a little bit deeper around those interventions. Our code spells out like really good restorative interventions. But now we're going to kind of take a step back and drill down into a, a protocol for like, here are six solid treatment-based things that we want you to try and utilize those skills and how to track it. The biggest thing in behavior is getting people to get the information and track it in a graph so that they can see, like, is this working? Did you do what you said you were going to do? Were you at the, were you at the classroom at this point? And that's one of the skills that we've got to, we got to build our muscle there. And so, yes, I hope that helps. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Fabi Williams, our Deputy Superintendent, will give us a bell schedule committee update.
Good evening, members of the board. Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Mr. Bohannon. If you guys recall, I believe it was a couple of months ago, you charged staff with reviewing our current bell schedule and coming up with some recommendations for, for your, your review. So we created a committee that comprised of a number of folks, a little over 40 folks, including one of your own, Board Member Watts. We had teachers, parents, principals, as well as some community care providers as well, who are part of this committee. You can see from the timeline here, our first task was creating a survey so that we could engage and get some really good feedback from our community, which is what we did. The committee met, and we came up with a number of survey questions that gave us some really good information. We wanted to make sure that whatever recommendation that we made to you was based on feedback from the community, as well as our staff and stakeholders. So here's the timeline. We've tried to stick very close to that timeline. And so you guys were given a lot of information. So I'll just kind of do a quick overview of the survey results. You can see that we had a little over, we had close to 9,827 responses. It was broken down by students, parents, staff members, and community members. And you can see that our parents were made up about 59% of the respondents. And so a couple of questions that we focused on per the committee was looking at our standardized time. And based on the survey results, you can see here that we had about 38% of our folks somewhat support. We had about 20, 28% strongly support standardized in our time. And then you can see the rest. As far as explaining our instruction of the day, our stakeholders were very clear in reference to what they expected or wanted. And you can see that results here, a little over 60% were strongly opposed to increasing the instruction of the day. And so as far as the order of start time, we, you can see the results here as well. We also looked at some research that we shared with you all. And so you guys can take a look at that as well. And so based on the responses from, from our committee and our stakeholders, this was what we came up with, 38% wanted elementary schools first, then middle school, and then high school. And that's kind of aligned with some other districts as well. But we didn't really want to focus a lot on what other districts were doing because their schedules are based on their needs, the needs of their community as well. And so we wanted to make ours based on the need of our community. And so this is just some generous summary of our survey. And so we presented part of this information to our teachers advisory committee. And there were some questions, there were some concerns, concerns that we also looked at as well. One of the concerns that came up was around middle school athletics. Because with a recommendation, and I'll show you guys based on the results, what the recommendations are, there are some challenges that we need to, to look at to see if we will even be able to accommodate those. So this is a look at our current bell schedule. And you can see it's all over the place. But we've, we've made it work. We've managed to make it work. Our transportation department staff has made it work over the last few years. But it's been challenging. And as you know, with the challenges of shortage of buses, this can be even more challenging as well. So based on the results, this is a proposed recommendation. Again, just to clarify, this is just a recommendation to get feedback from you all. And then we're going to take this back to the committee and engage our stakeholders again. and engage our stakeholders again, maybe do another survey. Uh, we also plan on talking to some of our, uh, after school care providers as well because one of the concerns that came up from the committee, uh, and from members of, uh, uh, our, our teaching staff was would we be able to accommodate childcare if we were to change our start time? Um, so we plan on looking at that as well. And so our next step begins will be to get some feedback from you all, take all of that information back to the committee, get back to your drawing board and see what else we can come up with.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Williams. A couple of questions. First, um, what are we, what are we defining as the instructional day? So like within the survey, we're to ask people how they would feel about expanding the instructional day. Is that the beginning of school to the end of school? Or are we talking about actual instructional time in school, which is different?
So, uh, Annie, you wanna come up and I?
Bell to bell?
Okay. So essentially this is, this question essentially people were answering it as if do you, if you have 390 minutes now, are you in favor of expanding that at all? Okay. So I, okay, did I, okay, my next question is, what, when you say, cause I think, you know, you had mentioned that the goal of the bell of this committee and the potential bell recommendations are to address our, our needs, right? The needs of our district. I think that to me, and this is not necessarily like a, this isn't a question per se, but I think there's a difference between the needs of our district and the desires of parties, right? So like there are individuals who say, and again, we have multiple, multiple constituencies. We have our, we have staff, we have students, we have parents and guardians. There, there are desires from those constituencies about what to do. But I think that in terms of our needs or why this even kinda has come up in the first place, one of the things I think that we maybe need to, I would recommend we kind of figure out a way to do a better job of communicating is around why are we even having the discussion? Because I think this is the third time, at least since I've been on the board, that we've tried to make any type of adjustments. And every time it's this big, don't touch it, like why are we, you know, what is the problem? There are issues, like very clear issues with our current bell, bell schedule. I think that people are not clear about what those are. It also occurred to me just relatively recently that, and board members all I think got this information about our lunchtimes in our buildings. Our, most of our, our kids only get 25 minutes for lunch. And so when you talk about the extension of the school day, I think there are a myriad of reasons for potentially extending the school day that are not just beyond like more class time equals higher learning. And then the other piece is, this is an actual question. When, when people arrive to buildings, like from bell to bell, like that's what time school starts. But staff tend to be required to come to school earlier than that, right?
Correct. I believe it's about 30 minutes earlier.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Coon.
I think I would, one thing I would love for you to help me understand is how this new schedule is going to help transportation. Like what is it going to do to make our transportation more efficient?
I don't see Lauren. Yep, Lauren, I'll have Lauren take that one. She's also in the committee as well and we discussed that.
Good evening. So one of the things that we've been continuing to talk about with the committee is that there, there is no golden egg for transportation when you're 55 drivers short. And so the goal is in the standard routing structure that we have, if we had the drivers that we need, what would those routes look like and what would they need to be? And so one of the things the transportation team proposed when they saw the survey results was having the 35 minutes between each of the bells versus 30 so that they could be able to support the runs. Because we don't wanna have kids on runs as long as possible. But there are lots of other pieces of work that are happening simultaneously around choice, our foster diverse schools grant and other things that all come into play. And so it is, it is not a one stop shop, this is gonna fix transportation, but there can be lots of improvements when you have bell schedules that have standard instructional hours for students that mirror morning and afternoon schedules so that buses are more consistent than the one off five minutes here and there.
And just to follow up with, um, that, how many, um, folks outside of Ms. Davidson, um, from transportation are on the committee?
On the bell schedule committee, um, currently myself and Ms. Davidson. Um, and then the information goes back to bus advisory group and other members on the staff, which is your corridor supervisors. Um, and maybe one or two of the routers depending on their availability.
Um, I would love to encourage you all as you're seeking more information to, um, bring in some more of the boots on the ground folks when you're talking about this and how it actually will play out with transportation.
Sure. You can say that.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
Um, I also wanna say, one of the things about increasing the bell schedule, the time, I want us to make sure, one of the proposals I think we got from board members, but it came from students, was to increase our time at lunch. And so we said 10 minutes extra, it wouldn't go maybe into instruction, but maybe 10 minutes into kids having 10 more minutes to be able to talk to their fellow classmates and have that social time. And that's one of the things we're lacking. So I wanna make sure that we put that out there, that that is a possibility. Or what is the possibility that people would accept that, an extra 10 minutes that would go into lunch?
Yes, ma'am. And I think, uh, Superintendent McManus asked us, uh, I believe it was a couple of months ago to actually look at lunchtime to do a survey to see how much time was being offered at each school. So we, we were consistent with that. So I think this would, would be a perfect opportunity for us to kinda standardize that a bit as well. Um, so yes.
Board Member Watts?
I just wanna reemphasize, Dr. Williams, that you're, what we said on this committee, this is only the initial step.
Correct.
That no decision has been made yet for any changes to our bell schedule. So I just wanna make sure we're very clear that the committee right now has not made any decision. There are no recommendations. We're only gonna go back and take what we've gathered from this survey, digest it, hearing from the data we're hearing from tonight, concerns tonight, and then go back out again with other things from what we're hearing tonight, other suggestions, other recommendations. Is that correct?
That is correct. So if you take a look at our timeline here, we still have several other meetings to go, uh, to get feedback into before coming to you all with a final recommendation.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
I just, I also, cause I know that Board Member Brown Gaither, you had mentioned sort of adding the 10 minutes to increase lunchtime for students. I also think it's important that staff have that additional time. And I think that the, I know that in elementary and middle, sometimes lunch works differently. Like if you're a teacher, you might go to lunch with your, your class sometimes, but at least providing that opportunity because nobody, like, I, I did not know that right now we were expecting people to eat in 25, like for students, get your food and then eat in 25 minutes. I think that that's, um, I mean, and, and I definitely don't want our staff in our buildings, our teachers to only have that amount of time to eat lunch. Cause yeah, at the bare minimum, it, 10 minutes would be great for that.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Tommy Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will discuss the classified market study proposal for the county fund use.
Good evening. We were asked back two years ago. Um, we asked for additional money from the county and one of which was to address the classified compensation rates. The county decided to set the funds that we had asked for to go into a reserve. Then it came out that they wanted a study. And then that's come up again during the thing. So we've said, okay, we sat down and came up with this study. And the intent and the way it got started was using the 2020 report. There was a detailed study done with very good goals and objectives that seemed to make a good base for us to take it to the next level. So as you go, you see the information here, it's closely tied to that 2020 report. So we used the 2020 as a baseline with the objective going in FY '25 since we're in the FY '24 school year right now. The objectives of what the plan was trying to do is find a wage that our classified employees would have, this would meet the definition of a true living wage. Number two, that was transparent and easily understood. And that's a big thing for us in the payroll side because they, people seem at times that very well understand it, other times not so well. That it's competitive in the marketplace, primarily to retain the existing employees. Now this year, when we rolled out the local service longevity, which y'all approved, that has the objective of retention on retaining your existing employees. If I come into the district, I stay here 30 years, in that 30th year, I'm gonna get a 10% bump on my pay. Not a bad way to go. Considering then the additional benefits that we have. And lastly, competitive in hiring of new employees. In 2020, there was two main objectives that they tried to achieve. One was a flat pay increase, and you'll see some data here in a second that shows the administration has done that. They went after that. And number two was reclassification of existing jobs. That occurred primarily before I came here. It is my understanding that the jobs that needed to be reclassified have all been done uh, within this current, our current administration. The bumps that have taken place, and I think it's important for everybody to understand, is in FY '21, there was a two and a half percent increase. And part of what happens with compression is that when I give just a universal percentage increase and everybody gets the exact same thing, as you looked at our first stat grade, the first 19 years of experience were all at the same rate. That's compression. When you look from left to right and the first five to seven pay grades are all the same rate, that's compression that took place. In FY '22, we did a 4% raise. In FY '23, we did another 4% raise. And then in '24, the raise was 6 to 8%. With all classified at 6. The state that year was 4%. So it was four plus two. On the bus drivers and maintenance side, they were given, the state said, we're gonna do a four plus two for bus drivers. The administration recommended and y'all graciously approved it. And we did a six plus two, so it was 8%. The point I'm making is, when you look at that 2020 report and trying to bump up, we've accelerated it in '24 and beyond. Okay? So the salary adjustments, we went through this on '23, '24. You can see the local service longevity. Bus drivers did go from, and food service workers moved to $2 an hour from $13 an hour to 15, which was another increase, which got them into the market where they were competitive. Where we were before, we were highly non-competitive and competing with people. The local longevity, I think y'all all understand it. Basically, if I come in on zero, when I get to year three, I'll get a 1% bump. Then I go another three years, I get another 1%. And like I said, at 30, I'm getting 10%. So it is something to shoot and retain, retain, shoot for the stars. So what we did is we took all the wrong data we could get our hands on. The biggest thing being us to start off with. Number two, Guilford County. Guilford is our primary competitor. That's who we see in just hiring in the finance department. I know they see it in the HR department. That's our primary competitors. There's smaller districts around that also you would think are our competitors. They don't have enough of an opening to really compete with us in the marketplace, nor do they have the dollars. Using the 2020 report, we went out, looked at Guilford. We looked at Du, I mean Durham. We looked at Wake. We looked at Forsyth County Government. And we looked at NCI, DPIs statewide averages. Those were the data that we could get and we compared. Initially, we looked at the groups you see on the slide, the school nutrition, the bus drivers, custodians, teacher assistants and skill-based manager, maintenance. Question was asked when we sent the report out in draft form for y'all to review, why didn't we do everybody on the classified side? And as I said in a memo, it was more of trying to get something done, making sure that the process we were using, the methodology we were using made sense, that you were comfortable with and we were heading in the right direction. Cause if not, we needed to step back and, and redirect our energy. We then looked at the data we had and as of tonight, we're probably 95% done with the data analysis of every classified position in the district. We need to spend some time, which will probably be tomorrow, that we complete our data analysis. We complete all the inner workings of the report. We have an opportunity to sit down with Ms. McManus if she's available tomorrow, but that we can find some time to sit with her. And we, I expect by the end of this week, the report will be final. So that's where we're at in bringing you to all the information. So tonight, it's more about just the concepts and then you'll see all the data points. We talked about who our, we looked at. So on this particular slide, it's very, very simple what we tried to do. School nutrition, let's take. The average rate, we had their highest hourly rate and their lowest hourly rate. We calculated a simple, a simple midpoint. A plus B divided by two and there you go. So that's the average that was for us as a county. The average for the market is exactly the same analysis. There's no differentiation. So I'm comparing apples and apples. And then the difference showed where we had the gap. You could see in school nutrition, the average rate in the market's $19.88. For us, our average is $19.64. So we're behind the curve. And then you can go down the list of the different jobs there and what the differences were. Now, when we tried to say, what was, we've talked about what our primary goals and objectives were. When we said, how are we gonna go about making a plan? What is it? Are we gonna say just beat Guilford? And that's enough? Or is it something else? So what we focused on was the market rate, the average market rate. We wanted to be no less than equal for any of those jobs with the average market rate. Okay? Well, when we did that, and you can see it on the schedule, we had some people that they were in the, the, the positive. Their rate was fine. So there was no adjustment done to those. We had some that are in the negative where our rate was lower than the rate paid by Guilford or by the average of the market. And on those, we gave a bump of 1.5. And this was a tier approach. We said if you were between 1.5 and three in the hole, you'll go to 2.5. And there's nothing magical about it. We were just trying to find something that made some reasonable sense without looking at the dollars. We didn't, we had not at that point computed what the dollars and cents were gonna be. Okay? That was not our driver. And then we got up to three. Now, what we have found is when we go to the, the whole classified pot, we have people who are significantly in the hole. And so you have to make some different adjustments and you'll see that when we release it that what the impact of those, and it shows you on that schedule, not just the job, but how many total employees are in that class. Okay? And you can see how everything kinda computes out and the dollars and cents flow through. So here you see where we did our computation. If we were to do the, the total projected increase, and this is without, you're gonna have to do a split between the funds. So if I'm funded out of federal, this bump would go into my federal budget. If I'm funded out of local, it's gonna go to the local budget. 68% of these employees are gonna go to local. So the bulk of it will go to the local fund. And you see the total of that is 1.2 million dollars of all funds. Questions?
Board Member Coon. Board Member Brown Gaither.
Thank you. You always look that way. But anyway, I got a couple of things, Tommy.
Yes, ma'am.
Under the recommendations, when I, and it's from a mathematical point of view of how terminology, that's all it is.
I understand.
Uh, when you had one B and you said less than but greater than, I just think, it, it is.
We went, we, I, I was going less, you know, with the greater than being the minus three and saying that I'm less than.
that I'm less than because it's smaller, the further the minus, the lesser you have. And we went back and forth, and it just had to get to an end, or I was going to go crazy. I'm serious.
Well, that one really should be greater than, that negative 1.5, and C should be between those two.
Correct. We rewrote those things at least a dozen times.
But then, when I looked at your projected increase recommendations, and I saw that when you did the one that was between and you, well, no, the one that was greater or less than, let me say that, where you were recommending 3%.
Right.
There was one that I think should have been in that 3% that was not in the 3%.
You had one that was in the minus?
Yes, and that would have been the, I want to say the teacher assistants, because the difference was a negative 1.8, so wouldn't that go to 3%?
Yes, it should have been 3.
Okay. So that was my only concern there.
I'll check on that.
Okay. So those are my two questions.
Okay. Board Member Kuhn?
I hope it didn't get asked while I had to step away. I apologize. Reminds me, do we have, we have a million dollars sitting in reserve, correct?
There is right now. It's the $500,000. They changed it at the beginning of this fiscal year.
So they did not, we don't have the a million, we don't have the million from last year?
The million wasn't spent by the county. And there was a discussion during the time of the budget development that the million could have stayed there. I don't think Mr. Martin, Dr. Martin would have had any problem with that. I don't know why they lowered it, but that came up during their budget discussions and conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Any? Vice Chair Bohannon.
So, and Tommy, this might not be, you maybe haven't answered this question, it might be a question for Tricia, but what was the original, was the original ask from the commission just for the study itself? Or for a study, for the study and a recommendation for how to spend the money?
I can answer that.
Okay.
It was, it was both. So it was, they wanted us to do a market study so that we could bring a recommendation forward, so that they could then give us the funding.
Okay. The reason why I asked that question is because, and I, and fully, being fully transparent, I was the one that asked the question about why everybody else wasn't included. Because these, as I'm looking at these positions, right, like, these are the, these are the classified positions, I think that we tend to struggle with filling. And I'm looking at Chris, is that correct? Am I right on that a little bit, kind of? So I, especially around like the mechanics and like some of the other positions, I know that we've just heard, we kind of struggled to retain a little bit. And so those positions are important, but I also think that the board had, and Board Member Crowley and Chair Kaplan, correct me, but I feel like we had asked the county for money to address classified staff several times. I feel like if you go back a few years, it started out with us.
Since before we were on the board.
Right. Like, I feel like the, there had been a request from the commission to address, and Board Member, you might be able to speak to that.
I believe Board, I believe it was Ms. Mott Singer that made the original request and made the motion to fund the original study, and that was at least six years ago.
Right. Well, and the reason why is because we have, you know, a lot of the conversation, just, not just us, but societally, tends to be on like teacher pay, but then our classified staff and not just including TAs, but people who work in operations and HR and finance, like, we tend to not really, like, they tend to be the last individuals that we're having the conversation about. And I was thinking that it, it might be beneficial, because I know that, Tommy, the need for the analysis and the way that we've done it is essentially to be conservative in the fact that we know we're working with a very limited amount of money. And so what I see that you've done is tried to kind of fit where the increases can be based off of the fact that we're working with a small amount of money. I believe that it might be beneficial to just paint the picture of where we are and to say, and to just put the data on the table of, this is how out of step we are, so that by the time, yes, for, I guess initially, for this $1 million, a half a million dollars or whatever, we can make adjustments, but really, to be honest with you, we're coming back next year to ask for money to just, because we, you now have the data to support why we've asked for multiple years for more than just a million dollars. Does that make sense?
Yes. And Tommy, in two weeks, we're coming back again, because based on what you all think about the methodology, like, taking those five entities or four, whatever, five, taking the average, making sure that in each of the categories, we're above the average. If we're already above it, maybe not touch those. But Tommy went back and did the other groups. Alex, he, Board Member Bohannon, he did your data managers, your.
Every single classified employee in the district.
Yeah, so he's going to bring that back. And the, and we do want to share when we take it to the county, the entire landscape, because again, 500 is not going to touch, like, once we add all those others in, I think I asked Tommy today, where, where are we at about now? He's like roughly close to 2. Am I right?
A little bit north of 2.
A little bit north of 2.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we, we really do want to present the full thing, like, to, to really be competitive in the market, where are we? So we're going to do that. Board Member Bohannon.
Because I think this, like, adopting this is like, we're trying to just make a little bit, but, you know, make a little bit of progress. But if we're asking the same question that we were asking, I think when we were having the conversation about the Cortisone sales tax, which is, we don't want to just do a little bit, we want to be competitive, we want to be number whatever, and I think now we're back down to, like, we were higher, now we're back down to even like, I think, number 6 in the supplement. But we, at the time, it was, we want to be number whatever. And I know that the, all these positions are different, but I think that we can, we can be a little bit more aggressive in our goal setting around that, at least.
Do you, can I ask a question? Do you, do you feel, so with going where, where, if we are under the average, not addressing it, that would not, I mean, we could, we could.
We can shoot for the moon here.
Go big and say, we're going to go above, and, I mean, we're going to go then above the average on, you know, I, I don't know if.
Beat Durham or beat Wake?
Well, and I, I think working within our confines now is beneficial, but I would love to see on paper, how much money would it take for us to be, like, how much money would it take for us to be, you know, second to first? Right? Like, just not trying to be number one, I mean, you know, just trying to be, you know, how much money would it actually take for us to be second on this list?
Okay.
It'll take us less than a day to make the computation. So.
Okay. You're awesome.
So we'll, we'll do the computation in the morning tomorrow, and then we'll get with you, Ms. McManus, to see how we'll, because we can make it any which way you want. We've got the model set up, and we can make it flow pretty quick.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Alex Hoskins, our Executive Director, Systems Coherence and Strategic Planning and Vice Chair, Alex Bohannon, will discuss the contract with Research Triangle Institute, which is RTI International for Customized Strategic Planning Support.
So good evening, Board, again. Mr. Bohannon and I are the Alex squared team when it comes to the strategic plan. And we, we come to you tonight with a, a request for a, a contract with RTI. As a reminder, we are in the development of the strategic plan for the 25 to 30 school years. And that particular process is a delicate balance between the priority of the Board of Education having the primary role, being the ownership of the strategic plan and setting that, that vision for the district. And then that vision that is set by the Board of Education becomes the outline of the scope of work for staff. So, so it's wonderful to have Mr. Bohannon and myself be able to, to co-lead this effort as, as we move through this year and through this process, to have both sides of, of the issue really become two sides of the same coin as opposed to, as opposed to anything else. So, so we had some conversation about why RTI International, they come to us with, with wonderful process and research experience. In the last five years, they've worked with Loudoun City, Virginia, Wake County, North Carolina, Durham County, Johnston County, and Arlington, Virginia. So they've been in multiple states and worked with districts of comparable size to us, as well as considerably larger. So, so they, they really do have wonderful expertise in this space, and they have knowledge of the district. So they work with us on a couple of other initiatives, which also helps. When you're dealing with a strategic plan, you don't necessarily want someone who is your next door neighbor being, you know, the, the unbiased partner, but it helps for them to have context and a little bit of knowledge of the district, because then you can kind of start a few steps into the process around what it is that the district holds near and dear to its, our, its heart and what it values. So the key priorities that it has, that RTI's partners have suggested is that they will give us a strategic planning process that is structured, that will allow us to have a vision of educational excellence as we move into the next five years, with a slight focus on the operational effectiveness, which is great, because I think that we, we are student-centered, but I think that it'll be wonderful to have a plan that looks at the holistic district in, in its entirety, as, as well as the, the student experience, the adult experience, the operational experience. And I think that voice will, will, will add something to the conversation. So there are a number of deliverables that they are offering as part of the contract. Again, I'm not going to read this out loud to you, but, but basically, there will be, they will provide not facilitation of the focus groups or the community meetings, but they will be part of the data collection process. So Mr. Bohannon and I will, will be the, the lead facilitators as the voice of the district. And then they will be providing the analysis of the data and the capturing of the notes so that, so that we can stay focused in on making that important eye contact and really listening to the voices and the body language and, and engaging in the conversation with our participants, as opposed to trying to say, oh, gosh, what did the third person from the left say during the second part of the questioning? Right? So, so then, and then they will help us identify those trends and, and patterns within the data as those things kind of come to the surface so that we can identify what is it that our community writ large is, is saying we should hold as priorities, both as a board and as a staff for the next five years. The cost of the contract is, is $96,545, and we do request that you approve the contract. Questions for us? Or Mr. Bohannon, anything you want to add?
Any questions?
This isn't, oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Crowley?
Go ahead.
Was, this isn't a question so much as a, I guess, saying how much I appreciate that we're going with RTI. I went to a convention and was able to sit in on Wake County discussing how they used RTI to do their strategic plan and how I took so many notes, because it was so, it was done so well and with so much intentionality from the community and staff and the board. It was a very cohesive, nice plan, and so I'm glad that we have chosen them.
Board Member Crowley?
So I'm really happy with the plan that we've been working from. I feel like it was incredibly well thought through, it's comprehensive, and I honestly don't see a need to spend $96,000 to change it when we're still working from it, we still have goals to achieve from it. I, unless I'm missing something, I don't foresee any major change in what our goals should be. It's very student-focused, I don't think that has changed at all. I don't see why we just can't change the dates on the one that we have and keep going forward for $96,000.
So I, I guess I can speak to that. The reality is that every large urban district engages in the strategic planning process, most school districts regardless of their size, but of course, we look to our sort of peers as guides. We are, I think, trying to consistently meet the needs of our students. Those needs shift and change. When we engaged or began to engage in the last strategic planning process, it was 2018, 2019, prior to the pandemic, and our partner, which we had a partner then, that was the North Carolina School Boards Association, they aided in the, the previous development of, they aided in the, in the development of the previous plan. Those were, those goals were aligned with the current needs of the district at that time. I think we owe it to our community, our stakeholders, to really be intentional about where it is that we're moving forward to, where we're going. And I think this process is a part of that. And it's, again, it's not a new, it's not a new thing. Districts tend to have five-year strategic plans, and then.
But we, we never had one before the 2018 one, so.
Well, I can, well, we actually did, because Ms. Hoskins did the last one before that, so.
It wa, it wasn't one that we saw as board members, then, that I was, it was, 2018 was a new one, and the whole purpose of hiring somebody was because we did not have one, so we needed that structure. And I, and we were kind of insured, it was like a one-time expense, and then now that we have the template, we can go forward and, and do this ourselves. I mean, I, just, as somebody, a strategic planner in central office, it's getting, paid to do, you know, has a salary to do this, and then we're also paying a consulting firm? I mean, I'm just asking, do we?
There, so, so Alex directly works with strategic planning, systems coherence, all the work, but there's not, this is not her only, like, so, so coming up with a strategic plan is not even, let's, how much of your job is coming up with a strategic, I mean, this is like a side, like, part, a little, small part of it, so in other words.
Didn't it used to be a full-time position? Didn't we have somebody on who was a strategic planner? Andy's nodding yes. Yeah.
Right, but.
So we don't have that position anymore?
Not, not solely for that. It's, it's many different, different components to the role that Alex is in.
And the other piece that I want to add is that when we did, when we were doing preliminary research and having conversations with some of our peer districts, Guilford and, and Charlotte Mecklenburg are good examples where they actually have not just a person, but they have offices of strategic planning. But both of those, well, Charlotte Mecklenburg, they, of course, are a bigger district with 10,000 employees, so they have the ability to be able to handle the strategic planning process internally. Guilford County has a strategic planning department, but still engaged a contractor. So, and, and actually two, one for marketing and the other one for the purposes of actually utilizing and analyzing the data. So I think the important thing to remember is that in terms of a staff support internally, it's Alex. Alex is that person. And the, the purpose of engaging an entity, number one, is accountability. So when you already have an established job, that's your job, right? The strategic planning process is supplemental to that, but it is extremely important. And so it's important, I think, the part, the, the important part of engaging a partner is also that you can hold them accountable for the pieces of the plan that they're responsible for. And RTI is going to be a, as I think already displayed, that they are willing to, to be a very close partner with us and to, to incorporate all of our needs into the development of our next plan.
Board Member Breon Gather?
I just have a comment, basically. I want to say that I do feel like we do need to get somebody on board to help us with this. When I got on the board, I was very concerned with our strategic plan and some of the goals we had. I thought they were extremely lofty and that we would not meet them, and we have not. And that's another reason I think we need somebody out to help us with this, because I was very concerned when I got on the board and we had that percentage of what we said our third graders, that we were going to have reading by grade level. And we've not even met pre-pandemic, so I think we need somebody to help us with that.
I will say the, it, this was budgeted, so there, there were budget items in the spring budget that we took forward for this specific purpose, knowing that we were going into the creation of a strategic plan this year. So I want to make sure the board knows that. This is not like something, an afterthought or something that wasn't put into the budget.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move to our action items. We have 13 action items to consider tonight. First, the approve, consider approval of the contract with Research Triangle Institute, RTI International for Customized Strategic Planning Support. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do, so I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 6 to 3. Next, consider approval of the amendment to North State Company Police Agreement. Do I have a motion? Next, consider approval of the amendment to North State Company Police Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the RealtOR contract for surplus property. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion?
Yeah. Were any of the actual properties disclosed?
So I don't know.
What the, what this is for? I mean, we, we, we've talked about some different properties, but has a decision been made on which properties were surplusing?
Lauren's going to come up.
Okay.
Good evening, Ian. No, there's no properties named in this contract, so that we can pursue any of the properties that we've spoken to you about in closed session before we come back with any proposals.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Education Resource Group contract for Mount Tabor High School. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval to name the RJ Reynolds High School greenhouse, the Glenn Perryman Greenhouse, briefed at the September 24th, 2024 board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve. Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the allocation of additional capacity and funds for construction of the new Ashley Elementary School briefed at the September 24th, 2024 Finance Committee mo, meeting. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Yes. Board Member Brown Gaither.
I'm sorry. I did still have my question that I asked in committee meeting and did not get an answer that I thought kind of helped me out with it. I know that we had the $78 million that was the issuance of the bonds, and 22 million of that was to complete East Forsyth High School. And then we were going to use 46 million for Ashley, which when I looked at it, the 78 minus the 22 minus the 46 left 10 million, but we keep saying we have 8 million to allocate. I just want to know what happened to the other 2 million, which is what I asked in committee meeting.
So it was for rounding. And so the ask for East was 20 million and some change. I've actually been working on that. I was sitting back there because it dawned on me when we were in committee this evening that I did not give that to you. And so it was, we rounded when we said 22 for East High School. And so that is where that difference is from. And I will send that to you this evening, along with Lisa and Ms. McManus.
So it's still 2 million in deficit. We put in 22 million for East Forsyth.
No, it was 20 million, 600 and some thousand.
On this, if you look at this, you put the board approval, 22 million for the allocation to support the completion of East Forsyth. So 22 million was in there. Are you saying that should have been 24 million?
No. It should have been 20 million and some change. I rounded up to 22 million to show that money was allocated, to be more conservative. And that is where you're seeing the gap.
It's still not.
Okay.
I hate to keep talking on this, but it's still not, the 22 million, yes, you rounded up, so you told us that all along. So if you take the 78, subtract the 22, you get 56 million, right? 78 minus 22, everybody? So then you're saying 46 for Ashley.
Yes.
56 minus 46 is 10 million, but we're saying we only have 8 million to allocate for other capital proj, projects. So should that say, say 10 million to allocate for other projects? Or if it says eight, where's the other two? That's all I'm asking.
And I can give that to you in writing, but I can't do that in my head, standing here with you at the moment. Like, we, we presented like eight different pots of money at 1.735 and 8.5 and all that. I, I'm not going to stand here and do that, but I will give that to you, and I do apologize that you didn't have it.
Okay, so any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. We've had discussion. All in favor? Opposed?
It's not because of Ashley. I want to make that on the record. It's not because of Ashley.
Okay. Motion passes six to three.
Chairman, I would like to consider, have us taken G, items G through M as one consideration amendment. Items G through N for one action, please.
So there is a motion to consider action items G through M as one action item. I will read them. Do, but do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. So let me read G through M. First, G, consider approval of the Jefferson Middle School Boiler Replacement Design Service Contract briefed at the November 14th, 2023 Buildings and Grounds Committee Meeting. H, consider approval of design contract for Parkland High School Kitchen Renovation briefed at the November 14th, 2023 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. I, consider approval for the Parkland High School Generator Installation Contract briefed at the November 14th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. J, consider approval of the Haynes Magnet Middle School Gym HVAC Design Contract briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. K, consider approval of the design contracts for Glenn High, the ERV replacement briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. L, consider approval of the design contracts for the Southwest Elementary Gym HVAC briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. And M, consider approval of the Winston-Salem Preparatory Generator Replacement briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Passes unanimously. Our next order of business is our superintendent's update.
I have one item on this, since I already spent so much time updating you earlier, and that is just to thank everyone. We, we did an outreach and the next day we literally filled an 18-wheeler, three-activity buses, a box truck and more. Like, it's just amazing how our community showed up. And we were able to deli, deliver water to with Toga and to Ash, and then another, another semi pulled out, I think, because we had even more and took it up to, I'm, I'm not even sure where that one went, but just thank you to everyone. It was really unbelievable. And the last thing about this is our, we are, our friends, colleagues, family members, people that in, in the western part of our, our state are still just suffering and, and have been displaced, families displaced. And so we are sending out information tomorrow. Dr. Williams is sending out something to principals. We are folks that come here, live with family members. We are embracing students into our school district. If they come live with family members, there are ways that we're going to make sure that is a painless process for them. We want to make sure that we welcome them with open arms, any children that need to, to move here and have a place to go to school while their schools are opening. And so I just want you to know, we are getting word out about that tomorrow to our building leaders, and we'll keep you posted is, if we do have kids enroll. Any questions about that?
Yeah. Thank you for that incredible effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the families who are coming, they do not need to have any paperwork, because we can enroll them in our school space. It's actually state law for us to do that, but it's also the right thing to do. So just wanted to put that out there in case they were concerned about having documentation. We know that. Through emergencies, you leave with your kids and you come, so.
Thank you. So our next, our next meeting of the Board of Education will be on October 22nd, 2024. I don't believe we have any. Oh, excuse me. Yes, excuse me. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. Excuse me. Consider approval of the General Personnel Report. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. And do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Sounds great. Okay. So we do have, we do have three potential speakers for public comment. Before I, before we go to that, let me just say to our Cable Two viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our meeting.